Good evening, everybody. I call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Uh, it is Thursday, August 26th, 2021. Roll call. Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady, um, there was a back-to-school night for the kids, so she may be coming in late. Donna Rogers.
Here.
Randy Hall. And Jason Daley also got ahold of us and said that he is working late. He may show up sometime during the meeting. We have a quorum, and the mayor, Joshia, is here as well. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Parsons, will you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report, wastewater plant update. Um, construction, according to their engineers, the construction's progressing very smoothly. The Old Basins 1 and 2 are completely dewatered now, and they are using excavating equipment to shape the basins. The chlorine contact chamber foundation's been poured, and the vertical walls will be in next week. And, uh, as mentioned before, the city still is not discharging any effluent, treated effluent into the Olaqua Creek. Since this whole process began, um, they used all that water to help dredge the old basins. And so, um, as such, they don't feel that we'll be probably discharging until the middle of September, probably, when the temporary basin 3 fills up. They're, uh, monitoring basin 3, and, uh, they, they feel that when we do start discharging from there, that we will still be in compliance with ecology's limits. Um, also, the, the other two basins should be online before the winter rains start increasing the flows, um, to the point where basin 3 couldn't handle it. So, question already.
Could you ask the gentleman that's the project manager why I'm seeing trucks going down Main on occasion? I thought they were just going to be using A Street. So, just question.
Wonder why? It's not the most direct route.
No, and I didn't know if they were going to go, if they were eating at the little corner or not. That was my next question. If you have any of the sewer plant people down?
I have no idea.
Oh, mom's pretty sure too.
I don't, they don't smell funny when they're down there, so.
They would've been in a very large truck, Jake.
Jason Daley has joined us. Thank you for driving, Jason. Um, continuing the mayor's report, um, public hearing, planning committee will hold a public hearing on September 16th regarding supportive and transitional housing. Their, this ordinance change, this ordinance requirement that the planning committee will be, um, meeting about is a state requirement. They came out of the most recent legislation, so all cities need to adopt supportive and transitional housing ordinances. Uh, we have until the end of September to complete this. Worden Park, um...
I just, I just wanted to know what supportive and transitional housing meant, that's all.
The ordinance is on the table, if you'd like to take a look.
Thank you.
It's amazing. Worden Park, uh, per RCO request, we're updating the cultural resources survey that was done back in June to include historic jail information. Um, once that update's done, um, it's our understanding that we'll be able to break ground on the playground project. Uh, the inter administrative assistant position interviews continue. Uh, we did interview, um, we've interviewed a few, two different people at this point, and both of them made known at the interview that they'd be very temporary as they have other, they're either moving within, within this year or, um, have other family commitments coming up. And so they were very gracious in letting us know this. But of course, that doesn't do well for your interview process when you say you're gonna leave in, in a few months, so. Uh, we have received a number of more, um, applications this week, um, so we'll have some more interviews next week.
I thought you had somebody. Did you have somebody?
We thought so, but they were one of the people that said that they, they couldn't take the position because of family issues at the last minute. And lastly, the city website, um, our city website, it currently is hosted by Google, um, and it was made using the, what's Google calls their classic website editor. Um, they're gonna end of life that on September 1st, and so our website would no longer function. So, we're updating the website on their new editor so that it'll be functional. Uh, we'll have it online, um, before that happens. Um, we've basically recreated the old one as best we can using the new system, so.
Will it still have the same address?
It'll all be the same. So, you'll, you'll see that change here before the next council meeting. Uh, council reports.
One thing that I've noticed, um, recently, they, they painted the lines along the Highway 506, 7th Street. Is there any way that we as a city could request them to take out the passing lane that goes right through the middle of town? See, people passing log trucks, and that's where our, our crossing lanes are. There's gonna be a lot more people with kids in town. Is there some kind of way that we could?
We have a contact, um, with Department of Transportation. We can relay that request to them. They're very good at telling you no, so, um, but we can definitely relay that request to them.
How about a school zone? We brought that up three years ago.
Right, they're very good at saying no.
They still said no.
Right, yeah, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna put up any additional signage and things like that, so.
Well, originally, is that, are you talking about down by your place?
No, um, between the tracks and, say, seven, I don't know, B Street?
Because they're rid.
It's all dotted lines through there, and they, they pass all the time there.
Oh, 'cause I thought you were talking about.
I've never seen a passing line. That just means you can pass.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, not a passing line. It's just people, a dotted line, people are passing, and it's like right in the heart of town where the post office is. It's supposed to, so.
It's not going to, I gather.
We can definitely put in the request, um, and we can also add in that, who knows, maybe they'll be more receptive this time for different reasons. We can also ask the other questions about the school zones and then the crossing, the highlighted cross, the flashing crossing signs on across to D and things like that. So, we can ask them about everything again.
Or just a can of paint.
Not dotted anymore.
I wish I had a liner. I, I lined my parking lot, that's coming. Yeah, and then, I just thought about that the other day. I've seen two cars pass this one log truck, and I'm like, you know, you know, I, I'm just waiting for the kids to go over to the park, or, you know, once we have a nicer park, there's gonna be more attraction towards that, so I just think it's good to be.
Sure, and there is a lot more money floating around, um, between the different federal grants and COVID relief funds and stuff, so the state may be more receptive to requests like that right now. Further council reports. Okay, uh, moving on to agenda approval, um, there was a change in the voucher amount. It got smaller. It was, for those of you that came in and signed it, Stephanie may have explained it to you. Um, I think Donna was actually the one that pointed it out, um, that they had put, uh, put the PVD, the couple hundred dollars worth of Electricville, on there twice, so they, they pulled it out from the original agenda that was posted, so, um, we need to approve the agenda with the change in the, in the voucher amount. So I think you have the revised number there.
Don't we need to approve the agenda first, all that?
Something that Diane and I talked about a couple weeks ago was, um, once the agenda's posted 24 hours in advance, we shouldn't make changes to the agenda. If we're gonna make changes to the agenda, it should come from council during the meeting. So during the agenda approval process, um, approve the agenda with the changes to the voucher totals, and then when we get to voucher, then we can actually just say the amount.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Just seemed a little bit more proper that way.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for city council meeting on 8/26/2021 with the changes to the voucher approvals.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda for 8/26 with the amended, with the changes to the vouchers. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve this city council meeting minutes for 8/12/2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes for August 12th, 2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I second it.
Thank you, I, I haven't read it.
Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
So these numbers that are on the.
If you go to the next page.
I got one that says revised.
Revised?
Is this the one we're supposed to have?
They're revised, yeah. You see there that it's, that it's, it's just a matter of a few hundred dollars less.
You want to approve it since you found the mistake?
No.
No.
You do it.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the vouchers amended at the end of July 2021, fourteen dollars. At the end of August 2021, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. For a total of July at six hundred and five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. In the August total, sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and sixty-five cents.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the revised vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. The planning committee relayed to me that the, they have the, the finished, uh, manufactured home, the final ordinance. Uh, they had the hearing last week, and, um, that'll be routed to council soon for our final approval. Um, park board also relayed to me that they have another, uh, chipping event coming up on October 9th. Uh, it'll be starting in the morning. They'll have more details to come. Um, this'll be similar to the last one where, uh, we use city resources to go, um, house to house to collect limbs off the side of the street with volunteer help. Um, they get taken down to Murphy, and they get chips down there, and they get spread on the, the, uh, the trails. The last tipping event, we had a volunteer that provided a service. Um, Caesar from the, uh, New Life Tree Service here in town did that. This time, uh, Lewis County is actually gonna fund it. The park board was able to secure grant funding for that, so, um, they're gonna hire somebody, and he'll be paid out of grant funding, um, for that service. The other thing that's coming up is the Styrofoam collection. Um, this is actually put on by Lewis County, um, but it also, it's also recycling related. It's on September 11th. It's at the old collection site on the Winlock-Vader Road. So, you can take your Styrofoam out there.
What date is that on?
That's on September 11th. Styrofoam collection. So if you've stockpiled it, I guess.
Why don't you just burn that or?
I wish there was a place you could take that all the time, so I wouldn't have to throw it away. I'm certainly not going to stockpile it for a year and then finally take it, but, in any case, um, that's it. Uh, moving on to city business, item number one and the only item. Council to discuss the state-required draft ordinance for the supportive and transitional housing. So, as council was informed, informed a while back, came out of the latest legislative, latest legislative session from Olympia, and, um, all cities have until the end of September to adopt, certain requirements. And so, um, I instructed the planner and the attorney to come up with something, but don't reinvent the wheel because since every city is doing it, let's just get the most basic thing possible. So, that, this 11 pages is the most basic thing possible, apparently. To be able to adopt this by the end of September, it's going to need to get, um, routed to, um, Department of Commerce for CIPA review and things like that. 14-day waiting period on that. We'll need to advertise it in the newspaper that the planning committee is gonna hold a public hearing. We need to put that in the paper 15 days in advance. And then it needs to eventually come to council for approval, which means to do all that by the end of September and wait all those times, um, any changes that you have now, I'll need to relay to the planner so he can update this, and then we can have the planning committee have their hearing in 15 days.
I'm trying to figure out why we have to vote on it if it's required.
Because you have a choice of whether or not you follow the state law.
So we just say no?
You could, I suppose, and then I don't know what they would say. I don't know what the state attorney would say.
It's like the mask mandate, same thing.
I don't like this thing anyway.
Right.
But I really have an objection to having the city hearing examiner or listen to anything that goes on. That's a lot of money.
So, I asked that same question, and here are the answers. I have them ready right here. So, I asked, um, the attorney, why are we utilizing a hearings examiner for approval on these applications? Uh, she says, you do not have to, but since we have adopted a hearings examiner system, it is recommended. Hearings examiners are professionals whose job it is to make exactly these types of decisions. I don't know how many cities anymore who put permit decisions into the hands of the planning committee or the council because the legal risk is too high. And then I, I went on to ask, that seems to add a lot of extra costs and time to use the planning, the hearings examiner? And she said, yes, it does take longer and, and cost more, but if the city wants to have greater control over permanent supportive housing, et cetera, using the conditional use permit process provides greater control and will ensure more mitigation for this type of project. Most of these PSH, which is the permanent supportive, supportive housing projects, are for the service-resistant homeless who often have mental health and addiction issues, so mitigating the impacts is critical to not creating a problem.
Who's speaking now?
That is the, that is the city's attorney when I asked why we were using a hearings examiner.
So, you guys won't, well, other than Mike, most of you are smart enough to do this.
She likes you.
Thank you. So, apparently, I, uh, these, these applications are quite lengthy, it seems, and, um, sounds like, uh, the homeless are involved with all kinds of mental health and addiction issues, and so having a professional that understands development use regulations, review the applications is recommended.
Our planner wouldn't do something like that, or?
It is, but I think to review an application, it's like, kinda like that quasi judicial thing where we look at variances, and then we have to, the planning committee has a, a hearing about it, and then the council has a hearing about it, and, and there's a, it would be the same kind of thing, I think, if we had to go about that route. So we could have people in town doing these reviews in that kind of manner, and, and, or we could have a paid attorney do it for us, a third party.
Do you have an estimate of what that might cost?
Yes. My next question was, would this application need to be added to our new fee schedule? And our attorney said, strangely enough, your current fee schedule has a conditional use permit fee of $500. The proposed fee schedule has a fee of $2,750. These permits usually run for city costs of at least $2,000, so most cities that she's worked with charge $3,000 or more.
Well, I'm happy for her, you know, 'cause she makes a lot of money off of this town, and this is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And the reason she recommends it, 'cause this little hearing guy is one of her buddies. No.
No.
We don't need, no.
Our hearings examiner is, does not know.
Right. She's the one who recommended it.
Is from Chahalas.
Yeah, and she recommended him for the last little hearing inspection stuff that went on here.
The, the city retained him on our own. It had, it was independent of our attorney.
Of course it was. Anyway, um, I'm not for this at all, and I don't know, what I wanna know is this exactly what the state is requiring, or is this just her idea of what the state is requiring? Is this her made-up thing that she thinks we ought to have? I wanna know what the state actually wants.
Well, I did send you that website from MRSC, the article about, from MRSC about it, about a month ago.
Okay, well, I didn't get into it, so I will check with MRSC then.
Um, that, and it was there, and MRSC put that, put that article out, which is why I relayed it to all of you, letting you know that this was coming down the road because of the state requirement and the end of, the end of September. So, so all, it's all, all of the requirements are there, um.
Well, I just wanna know, uh, just exactly, bare minimum, what we have to do to meet those requirements.
And this was that, and this was my request, was just the bare minimum to meet the requirements.
This is bare minimum. We're in trouble.
Well, it did come from the state, so I.
I don't think all of this came from the state, and that's what I want a chance to find.
But that's why we get to put our spin on it, where we can say, we want our public, we want our hearings examiner to look at it, or do we want a future council or planning committee, um, who may not be as smart as us, thank you, Ms. Radcliffe.
Well, what are we supposed to be?
To do these reviews.
Well, you are.
Are we supposed to be some kind of psychologists or something because these people are homeless? Did you see the requirement for what these poor people that can't defend themselves? I couldn't even fill this crap out. This is, this is, and this homeless person is supposed to do it?
You realize it's not him that did this, right? It's.
I didn't want to spend any money on this either.
Don't even go there.
Don't even go where?
I'm upset at this, and I'm not upset at Joe, and I'm sure he's aware of that, so.
It sounds like it.
I'm not upset at you, Joe. I'm upset at this. It's awful.
Donna's just passionate.
Is that what he says? Does this allow people to live in RVs anywhere?
Yeah, I'm not saying anything like that. It's sounding, it's, it's looking like apartments and temporary housing like that.
Yeah, there's a lot, it's, it's all about.
We have to have a plan in case we have a bunch of homeless come to town, right, basically?
Right, so it's, it's, so if someone wanted to come in, and I think if someone wanted to come in and build, like, you know, build a facility.
Right.
That would house these people. That's what this would cover, and it gives us a way of, um, you know, having someone review those permit applications and be able to say, no, this isn't right for town. Yes, this is right for town. This location is bad because it's right by the park. This location is good because it's kind of, it's, it's that kind of thing.
Where's R3 at?
R3, residential 3, that's pretty much everything. If you look on the map right there, the zoning map, it's, I believe residential 3 is yellow.
Is white yellow?
I believe so.
Yeah, the white yellow is R1.
R1?
R3 is the star.
The 3 is supposed to be apartments and things like that.
What is that, that, that one below you?
Yeah, that's R2.
That's R2, whatever 3 is.
Yeah, but I think, hold on a second.
That's over, that's over Mikey's location.
I think there's.
No, no, that's enchanted valley.
Yeah, I actually think that if we look in our code, I believe that they're all the same in our code. Stephanie, was that you?
The R3?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah. R3 is actually a group, but anything that has a secondary use, it can also do a conditional use permit. So that's what this, um, code is going to do, is that somebody wants to come in where they can do a conditional use, um, place that we have a code that specifies what it has to be, and the fee for the hearing, they will have to pay for that, and that's what that, um, what we put in the fee schedule. They're going to have to pay to cover all of those costs to put it in.
So what you're saying, Stephanie, is that they could apply to put one of these R3-related uses in R1 with that permit application?
There's a little confusion between, there's a residential one, and an R3 is a group code, which is completely different. Anything that's a residential is also an R3, but when we're talking about in, um, the R1, R2, A3, if you have anything that is a mixed use, they can do a conditional use in those areas. So that's what this code is going to specify, our rules and regulations, if they apply for that.
So this would protect the, the general R1 residential of most of the city, then? Kinda puts a?
Yeah.
Puts a shield over it, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is pretty simple. I don't anticipate seeing a bunch of hotels. The apartments go up, so we better be releasing you guys.
So.
I thought we were gonna talk about trailers.
Vader's pretty right for those type of people to come in here and build this type of housing, because they're gonna get, um, paid by the state and government. This is a little money maker for these people.
So, so this is similar, then, to the apartments over in Winlock across from ICA?
Are you kinda like HUD?
Could be something like that.
Like a HUD or something like that, probably.
So this gives us extra control over it, and control is not the word that was used by the attorney. Um, I believe the word was mitigation, is what, uh, they're, the, uh, ensure more mitigation of this type of project, so. Anyway, the, the point of this was to seek, it was not to approve it, it was to seek council input, um, about individual sections of it so that it might get changed, um, before we route it off.
So just so I understand.
But it will eventually come back for council approval.
I just wanna understand this. We're supposed to be talking about it. Uh, this is actually all about having the facilities for these people. And this is actually about people coming in here and building those facilities, right? So I wanna know where this city hearing examiner has any need to be a part of that.
It's a permit, and they would have to apply for it, and the hearings examiner would be the one to review it and make sure that all 11 pages of this, plus whatever the state actually requires, is, is adhered to by the applicant.
Okay, but that just means that they are now cutting out, uh, the, the, apparently, the, uh, planning committee and the city council are too stupid to do this. And so now our attorney, she can't do it either, so now we need to add this guy to the mix.
No, I'm sure the attorney could do it.
Well, our attorney would represent the city in a, it would probably represent the cities. Similar to other hearings examiner cases, the attorney represents the city. Our attorney represents us. For the attorney, for our attorney to represent us and.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, exactly. There's, there's two, that's, there should be two different people looking at it. There's, there's the city's point of view, and then there's the applicant's point of view, and there's someone that's supposed to, to make the judgment of the two. You can't have our attorney be both, the judge and the person.
Is this, okay, I, I don't, um, I don't, I don't even understand that, but, um, I just, how many more people are we gonna pay hundreds of dollars an hour to to come and do this kind of stuff?
Well, this isn't what the, what the county continues to call unfunded mandates from the state, where the state says, we wanna do this, and you have to do it, and they don't give you any money to do it.
Is it the cost of the, of the stuff in the permit fee?
Right, so the, the actual formation of this document is costing us money because we had to have the planner and the, and the attorney make the thing. But, uh, the permit process, that will be totally, and the hearings examiner fee will be totally on the applicant, if we ever have an applicant. Drew, you had a question?
Well, I, I was just curious. Um, planning committee did a very good job on the five-year comprehensive plan. They've done numerous.
The planning committee didn't do anything on that. It was the planner.
Okay, well, Mr. Planner then, go to Mr. Planner then, but I'm just, I'm, wait, I'm trying to get rid of that guy, Donna, wait a minute. And then, and then we, the planning committee sits and then. And then, and then we, the planning committee sits and then, um, talks to Jason and said, you can build over there, and here's all the requirements, so why can't they do this?
They, they could, I mean, that was what they said, that, that she said that we could, the attorney said we could absolutely use the planning committee if we wanted to, but the, but like she said, the illegal risk is high, and so it's better to have, um, a paid hearing examiner that's a professional in these types of things do it. Uh, she also said that the city can absolutely decide to allow all of these uses outright and not adopt an ordinance at all. So if we did not put, adopt an order, ordinance that would allow us to, as they say, mitigate this type of project, it would just apply to us anyway, and then people could just, the state, whatever the state has written, would just be our law. So this is kind of like on top of the state's law.
So, do we know what the state's law is exactly?
Yeah, you can look it up in R C W, I don't have it for you here. Um, and I, I think this refers to it, doesn't it? This talks about the House Bill twelve twenty, um, so you could look that up. And I think even on the MRSC link that I sent you, the article, um, they, they link to it as well.
On the MRSC, um, they talk about spacing, and I've read this like three or four times. Have you seen anything about spacing in it?
I, I don't have it.
Because they say spacing is usually applied within zoning code limits, how close one of these designated uses may be to another use of the same type. For example, a city can't require a minimum of a thousand feet. So can.
I could, I could.
Can we put a thousand feet on this and mix it in any structure?
Is there a, a.
Per structure?
No, a thousand from any structure.
He's saying you can never build.
Yeah, basically.
Was there a section number on that, so I could tell?
On, no, it's just the M R S.
It's just their article, oh, this, is this the email that was sent to you?
No, this is something I looked up, it's the.
So there's spacing requirements of a thousand feet?
Is that the one that you sent me?
Well, they're, they have this.
Possibly.
Site plan, is that, this office is kind of, is this supposed to be for what they're building? Is this, now we have this into our ordinance?
Right, so the idea would be, someone comes to town, they want to do one of these projects. I, I imagine the number of different things that they could do is probably more than we could list, and so it's not listed. Um, and so this helps us control those applications with our own process and our own requirements.
Okay, because it just seems, um, we pretty much already have these on the site plan, okay?
Janet, you had your hand up earlier.
Oh, I, well, I was just thinking back to what Donna was saying about the, uh, person that you could hire to look all, look all this over. So do we ever, the city ever call around and like just check and see what other people charge for attorney fees or examiner fees or planner fees? Are we, are we just grabbing the first person then?
No, last year, was it last year? It must have been last year, we had to hire a new hearings examiner because our previous one was no longer offering. Our contract had expired and, and they were no longer offer, they were no longer interested in offering that service. And so, um, this, the fee of this gentleman was, um, relatively the same as our last one, so. You know, we have multiple examples of that, it's kind of the going rate for attorneys. Because it's an attorney, it's an attorney that understands the law, that's kind of acting in a, in kind of a judicial capacity, looking at two different sides of something and then, and making a decision on it.
Oh, okay.
And so it's at whatever the Lewis County, uh, attorney's rates are. It's kind of the, the going rates for attorneys are.
Right.
Hundred and eighty bucks an hour in the county or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
This doesn't allow those outdoor homeless camps like that hot mess in town camp, does it? This is all insider or something?
Right.
Okay, so that.
Yeah, this is, this is not camps. It certainly would not allow it.
So I could put one in my field.
Are you going to charge for your homeless camp?
I'm good, sir.
It's a hip camp thing, like the one out of town, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so spacing required for the ordinance. Okay, I can see about that. Other input?
Even in, that, we're a small city. Hello?
Yeah, Randy, you're, we're a small city?
Yeah, even we're a small city, and most of the people in the city, the planning committee and the council of volunteers, we don't really have any choice, but to go proceed with the hearing examiner to protect the city, there's, clearly there is no alternative despite what, you know, what some people said.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, if, if, if some company came in that wanted to do something like this, they'd probably come in with their own attorneys that would represent them, and.
But.
I, I would, I would hate to think that.
We need to have a hearing examiner to protect the city.
I, I would, I would hate to.
Despite.
I would hate to have.
The feeling of anxiety and the hearing examiners, uh, it, it has to be done. We're too small, we don't have many employees, we don't have a lot of things that we can deal with that. And the, the legal, uh, the, the legal, uh, it, it, it's just, this too, uh, susceptible to being sued.
Yeah, I mean, I, my preference is definitely to have someone that understands development regulations fully reviewing these, um, and not have.
Yeah, we, we don't have.
Our volunteers have to do it.
We need that expertise, there's no doubt that that expertise needs to be there.
All right, further, further input from the council?
Uh, I don't see where we need that hearing examiner. So far, for all these years we've been here, the city attorney seems to think she's qualified to do all of these ordinances and things like that, quite intricate, so I don't understand the conflict of interest if she represents the city. I just don't see.
It's apples and rums, huh? You're, you're confusing, we get the same.
So this, the, if I'm getting this correct, a person brings an application in, they have their attorney, we have our attorney, and then the examiner is the one that makes the decision between the two, acts as the judge, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, in that, in that kind of case, that's what happens, yeah, and, and so.
We need that protection, there's no way we're.
And if we have, if we have, um, an attorney on this builder's side and our attorney, and then we're sitting there, not knowing all the laws, that's.
Right, and our, our attorney would give us a recommendation, um, but then the planning committee and then eventually the council, um, would hear the case, in essence, in, in lieu of the hearings examiner.
So the person applying doesn't have to pay for half of the examiner, so it's that person, examiner's making decision for both sides?
They pay for everything, that's part of the fee. So that's why, that's why they have the, the fee. The fee for something like this is two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And so that fee would pay whatever costs we have, so.
There's the examiner.
For the, between the examiner, our attorney's fees to help us out in the whole process. If someone comes and wants to do this, they're going to pay a fee, and it's going to be enough to cover all of our costs.
So we don't pay for the examiner, is that what you're saying? It's included in that?
The, the, the funds are kind of a pass through where, yes, maybe we do pay for half, but we also charge them almost three thousand dollars for a fee, and so, so we're not in the hole for the money.
Right.
I think in this case, though, since they're initiating the whole thing, I have to follow up just to make sure if it's one of those deals where we pay for half or not, um, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Because I would think we'd have to pay for both, our attorney and examiner.
If we, we would have to?
No, would not, you would think that we would have to pay.
Right, because they're, it's their application, right?
And defend them.
They're coming in and they're saying, we want to do this, it's not a, right.
So you're saying that they're going to take care of our attorney as well, too?
Excuse me, Steph, uh, Stephanie, can you repeat that?
I, yeah, I was just saying that the fee is, if an applicant comes in, that's like, if they want rezoning, if they want some other things, they are paying for the whole process of it. And that's when we're looking at the new fee application, is to make sure all of it is covered and it's not coming from the city. It's what they want, and they're going to have to pay for it.
Donna, you were saying something?
Yeah, I was. Whatever, go ahead.
Oh, this is your, your input on, on, on this ordinance?
I, well, I want some time to, um, check into it more. I want to see what other cities are doing.
Okay.
Then I want to see what MRSC says about it. I don't, I, I don't know. It looks like we're going to have to change a, a lot of our own ordinances to accommodate these people that are going to want to come in and build these places to some degree.
Yeah, there's a, a number of modifications to different parts of our code because of it.
Well, that's if we get anybody, I think Vader's a hotbed for, I mean, there's no surprises here.
Yeah.
We, we have one.
Californians and homeless people, they all want to live here.
Yeah. I mean, I still see a lot of people. Plus our, all of our property, for the most part, is, is privately owned. You know, they got to find somebody to sell something.
Hey, my neighbors probably. Thanks a lot, I'm kind of almost lost at this point.
I just don't think that's going to be a really big issue.
It, it may never be, it may never be, but for the time that it is, it would be nice to have this protection in place. And once again, it's one of those deals where if we don't add, if we don't add this to our, to our code, then we're just, as they say, as she says, allowing these uses outright, so. Because we don't get to say no, the state laws are number one.
Section, um, eight or HUD housing here. It's not necessarily a homeless camp.
Yeah, I mean. It couldn't be on Creepy Matt Allison's place, because that's R one, it'd have to be something, well, not creepy Matt.
Well.
Well, how did this one get down here? I bet you that's section eight.
I don't know, we're outside.
But that's not for homeless.
It's in a.
But it's not for homeless or.
The way Stephanie said, if there's a secondary use, it can be used as, if it's in R one, R two, or R three, if there's a secondary use on it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's, that it, any, I'm pretty sure that our code allows those other uses within pretty much the entire, any place in the city with the right kind of application and conditional use permit.
That's my understanding, that they can pretty well build anywhere if they want to.
You can't just look at that map and say, oh, it's only right here, that's not the way it works.
So transitional housing and supportive housing, that sounds like they're going to be here for just a short period of time.
There can be people paying houses.
So is this like a, is, is like a hotel?
Halfway house, prison people.
Sometimes they stay in their.
Supportive housing says no, no time limit.
See, no time limit? Okay, then that's again like a section eight, like a, a month to month rental.
Yeah, it's like.
See, that transitional and supportive housing is the confusing thing.
They could, they could put a prison in like when people get out. It could cover like, uh, recovery homes, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Does council have further input on this right now?
Are those?
Ideas?
Do we know if those, or maybe, uh, deputy, you might know, on I five, next to the Kubota dealer, there's like.
Those studio homes?
Yeah.
Studio homes.
That's a good trailer park, and I think they just, the land, the owner just put some nicer places.
Built tiny ones.
It's not anything that I'm aware of, and we have some on, on Harrison that would fall under this category, but.
But the county doesn't have to worry about it, it's just cities.
Well, we have, we have some outside the city of Centralia up on Harrison Avenue that fall in this category, the reliable enterprises.
Oh, yeah, I do get.
Yeah.
I, I don't mind.
So what do we need to do to just have this keep moving?
Nothing.
Nothing, oh, perfect.
Well, no, I wanted an input, I mean, I wanted to make sure we had input on it, and so like your idea of a thousand feet thing, that's, that's interesting. Um, and maybe that, that could be kind of a loophole of some, of some sorts.
I read a thousand seventeen two somewhere.
So I'll definitely.
I thought it was in here or somewhere.
Route that category.
Maybe you did read that M R S thing.
By accident, I.
Sent it a while ago.
In my sleep. No, but I, that thousand feet rang the bell with me over that, so I, I'm not sure if it's in here somewhere or, or not, but.
I searched for a thousand and I didn't see it.
Do we actually know how much, uh, like vacant ha, uh, land we have that could possibly, if someone came here and could buy it, and just how much would we have available to?
Well, it doesn't need to be vacant, I mean.
Well, not necessarily vacant, but I'm saying, if they wanted to build a facility, they're going to have to have the land to do it, so I'm just wondering, how big of parcels do we have that could possibly be available for something like?
Well, if you look at that map there, if you look at the north side of town, uh, see all those big, empty twenty acre squares up there?
Yeah, but that's McMurphy's, isn't it?
Right, they're owned, but they're vacant. McMurphy and Vermillion, I believe, own those properties.
And he's trying to sell them.
Those are, there's a hundred acres right there, nice and, nice and flat.
For sale. You've got the one dollar right for sale.
Yeah.
So.
Down, down by grandpa's house.
You know, uh, what do they say, everything's, everything's for sale for the right price.
Oh, yeah, I'd sell mine for that, if someone fills a lot of money in, I'm off.
And so, um. So there you go, there it is.
We actually, um, that's the reason I bought that back pasture behind my house, like down in the corner, because there was a neighbor.
You're going to put a halfway house?
There was a neighbor on F Street standing out there, and I said, hey, what are you doing? He goes, I think I'm going to put a homeless camp back here. And I said, all right, cool, that's a good idea, and I ran in and called the owner and locked it up.
But there already was a homeless camp back there.
It was.
It's been for years, yeah.
I know, when I was cleaning it up, I found forks everywhere. Van, van benches, those made good couches, I guess, because there was three or four van seats bucket or bench seats out there.
They're weather resistant, you know, you know.
I have a friend broke in the long night by.
All right, any other input on this? I'll relay the, what I do have to the planner. Okay, hearing none, um, moving on to public comment, there were three. Sounds like Mr. Daly needs to be excused for an emergency.
That'd be great. I had a friend who got blew his tire on I five, and he was in a peculiar position.
I want to get away.
Do you need a trailer?
No, I just.
My trailer's at the kids' house.
I just need to take him to Jack.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Uh, public comment. Janet Charlton, number one.
Janet Charlton, six twenty sixth street. Um, first I'd like to thank Diane for, um, taking care of the garbage issue, and Joe, um, down on my corner. Um, however that got taken care of for you two, and the health department, the garbage is gone for now, so thank you. Um, and then, uh, my other statement is, I was here, I don't know, a month, month and a half ago about the police department, so I'm just checking, I said I'd be back to check back in, and so here I am, checking back in.
So we had to sit down with Mr. Schnauser and Mr. Underhill about, uh, about the contract. And, um, and I know you said that, you, you said you weren't interested in expanding, um, Lewis County's coverage of us, but we did present that, uh, to them to see what they would say, and, and at this time, he, he is so understaffed that he can't, um, support extra, uh, patrols in the city at this time. Um, it's just so hard to find law enforcement, um, that wants to work in Washington right now. Um, and so a lot of the people that he has are move, are moving out of, uh, out of state, um, and they're certainly also looking at other counties that pay more, so he's having a hard time retaining people. Um, and so, um, that's that. He did, um, say that it's possible that, um, Toledo uh, a kind of a joint Toledo, Napavine, Vader, um, police force could be an option. And that we should talk to, um, those police chiefs, I think actually Napavine was hiring a new police chief, I think is what, what they were saying, but uh, the Toledo peace, police chief would be interested to talk to, it's, it's on my list to do to talk, talk to him. Um, as far as forming our own force, and I think that was your preference.
Well, that was number one followed by the one you just talked about, yeah.
Um, he, he, once again, it's really hard to find law enforcement right now. And the folks that are, that are available to hire, um, have kind of shady histories in law enforcement. Um, those are the ones that are, 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 are available, and if, uh, we did.
Is he talking sheriffs and state patrol or city? I mean, because he is.
He was talking just in general, law, law, law enforcement in general. Um, it's, it's, it's hard to find really good people right now, and especially in this area, county or city wise. Um, a lot of them go other places for higher pay, since other, the other neighboring counties pay more, so, um.
Well, my thought, my thought was that I know that, you know, police in the bigger cities because of the, I know support are leaving. And so my thought was, they'd just love to get out of the city and come to smaller towns and take the job, that was what I was thinking.
That's possible, that's, that's possible that they could think that.
I mean, it's cause somebody said something, I mean, I know he knows his business, but.
Yeah, and I, and, and, and I know just in general, though, the, the new laws that can, he, he, he talked at length about the new laws that came out of Olympia this year, and how restrictive it is, um, for all of law enforcement in the state right now.
Right.
Until those get changed.
Yeah, true.
He is gonna come and talk, I believe, he said he's gonna be here, um, so it'd be a good time, I, he actually just emailed me today. Um, he's gonna be here at a council meeting. On.
Write that down.
Geez, do I know what your secretary was the second time you sent that to me? Write that down.
Well, you know, I didn't bring pen.
Okay, I'll do that for you.
Well, why are you looking that up? So then.
Oh, he said in October or November, so I don't have, I do not have an, a firm date yet, I'm sorry. That was from, uh, uh, his second in command, so.
Uh, during this meeting, or whoever, whoever you, I don't know how the whole process works, but I do know that we pay them and they work for us.
Yes.
So why is it we are not asking them to patrol our town when we have the crime rate the crime times that we have here, not the times that they're coming?
Well, we, we have relayed that to them, so.
And.
I mean, what's, so the issue, so i- i- in, okay, in your opinion, when are the, the high, the high times? The, uh.
Well, it's not just my opinion, I mean, I joined the, all the Vader groups just because, I mean, sometimes I'm on there commenting, and sometimes I'm posting pictures of the sheriffs, um, in town, um, sitting in places that, I don't know why they're sitting there, and it seems to be the same places for hours. Um, and so, it seems to be a lot of complaints on there about people, um, going through people's windows, open windows, breaking in their garages, and it's not between two and five in the afternoon. It's on the weekends, in the middle of the night, not, um, in the middle of the afternoon. Now, I've taken it upon myself in my neighborhood to actually stop the people who are speeding, and writing the stop signs. And so I've already, um, got one guy under control that lives up past Matt Allison's, and him and I became friends. Um, even though he was kinda annoyed with me when I stopped him, but, the other guy that just moved in down, down the end of, uh,
E Street.
E Street, thank you, um, he was not happy with me at first, and he tried to throw his sons under the bus and and then at some point now, when he sees me outside, he stops and he slows down, but I mean, they book through there. And that's not, my concern is a kid's gonna get hit, and I told both of these people that. But my concern really isn't as much as the speeding, I don't like that, it's the, it's the part about people's homes getting broken into. Because there are a lot of single people in Vader, including myself, there's a lot of older people in Vader. Something's gonna happen in this town at some point, I don't know, either a kid or an older person or something. Um, something's gonna happen, and we're all gonna go, well, we should have done more, we should have did this, we should have done that, and I just don't think sheriffs in Vader, between two and five during the weekdays, sitting at the church parking lot, or at the old Jim parking lot is doing our citizens any good.
We did, um, we did relay, um, that information to them during that meeting, that, um, in fact, I think your your comments in particular were re- re- relayed to them. Um, and they said a lot of times, when they're sitting around, you see them sitting around, it's not during the active patrol time that we're being billed for. Um, sheriff says that he's directed his deputies, if they happen to be in the area and they need to stop and do paperwork and things like that, to hang out in town, not as part of the billing process, just be here, um, while they're doing that kind of work. So sometimes, so it's just because they're hanging out and doing nothing, doesn't mean that's the time that we're getting actively billed for it, so, it's just.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, well, maybe they could, uh, maybe you could come up with like an active schedule, kind of, um, that you guys could have. Maybe you don't have to make it public.
Right, that's not something we want to be public.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Effect of what you want.
You can have, because I don't, I don't buy it, I mean, I see, there are, I'm not, you know, I've been already slammed a couple times on Facebook for saying I don't support the blue, well, in this case, the brown and green or whatever it is, but I do, I'm a hundred percent behind them. But if we're gonna pay eighty something plus thousand, I expect them to be driving around town in the middle of the night, when there's crime going on.
They really are, and you're not, you're not awake.
I see them drive by on the weekend sometimes, like at midnight, and they drive real slow, and I'm like.
So they're here.
Uh, I'm not awake at that time during the weekend, but at the weekend I am, thank you.
Alright, I'll relay that information to them too, see if we can do, can do something a little different. Ms. Costello?
Yes, Mr. Chev. Judy Costello, seven oh six B Street. I'm going to do a visual demonstration, I'm sorry everybody online can't see it.
Visual.
This represents the junk vehicle ordinance, and I've written the number down. And it's a couple pages. This is an envelope for every resident in Vader. Letter goes in here with a comment from the mayor on a cover page. Sealed and mailed to every person in Vader, please. I, I think fifteen cars at one residence, thirty some cars on one little short street with three houses.
So.
Does anybody else?
They have done that in the past.
I, I know, and we did this, uh, we did this probably eight, nine years ago.
Was that the newsletter recently, or was that a different thing that was the nu- the newsletter?
Well, you don't have a newsletter anymore.
No, no, no.
You just had one.
Right, it was the start of the new newsletter.
No, I think it was the start and the beginning of the end.
Doesn't a newsletter come out with the bill?
Yes.
It's supposed to.
And actually, it's, there's gonna be a newsletter, it's gonna be in the bill this time, too. Anyway, back to Judy's time, I'm sorry.
Back to Judy time, this is a buck to mail these out, people come.
So that's six hundred bucks.
I don't care, there's not six hundred residences, only two hundred and seventy-five. Six hundred houses?
No, it's, yeah, two hundred and some houses.
There's only two hundred and some houses, Mike, come on, that's two hundred and some dollars.
But if I get one, is my wife gonna read it? You gotta mail one to each person.
Put in the voter.
How about just mailing to the people breaking the ordinance?
Well, and that's just, you know, that's just kind of it, we're starting, we're getting like one step to being really, really out of control on this again, and I don't know what the answer is. Um, other than send this out, and with a nice cover letter that just says, you know, you do realize we have an ordinance. And it's supposed to be a hobby car or whatever, I mean, I don't like dictating what people do on their weekend time off with their boats and their cars and their trailers and stuff, but some of this A Street, Michael Street over here just looks like hell. I mean, and, and they're on the city right away, which again is a huge big episode there, you know, everybody gets excited. So, um, I just think, I, and I don't know if we need another garbage cleanup day. Cause I think we have a lot of excessive sitting around in yards, that maybe COVID has created something, but possibly you could look into doing a, a garbage day. Thank you so very much for listening to me and watching my show and tale.
We had a comment about the.
Um, so using the eight, nine years ago as the template, uh, for when this was done before, how effective was that?
Very effective.
Was it very effective?
People actually could put their cars up for sale.
Yeah.
Someone in who's relatives sold her, uh, a BMW that day, I mean, there was.
It was effective.
I'm wondering how, you know, the, the, the legal thinking, you know, being safe about it, you know, what can a city recommend, like say a junk car provider or something like that, or or maybe if you had three of them, so you're being, you're being quite equal.
I tried that before, Joe, and the office said, um, that they did not like recommending.
Yeah, and I can see why, you know.
Did three.
Sure.
Pick and choose, kind of thing. I know she have business cards out there right now.
Mm-hmm.
And that to me is recommending.
Who's the one that said they didn't like to recommend?
Uh, Jill.
Uh-huh, yes. Jill's not here anymore.
So, so possibly.
All these businesses around have signs up that name a specific tow truck that comes there and hauls your car away. So I don't think that's a problem, and I know that years ago, um, when Guy was mayor, I, I mean, the town was, looked even worse than it does now, that's possible, but it did. And they, um, they come up with all kinds of ways to get, uh, but the city wound up being responsible if they called the tow truck. So that was put off, and I don't know, somehow or another, they start, I think we, we have an ordinance about junk vehicles.
She just, she just had.
That was a real ordinance.
It's like a twenty fourteen?
Yeah.
So, number of years ago.
I, I think they could be mailed out to the people who have this problem, not everybody in town.
Right, yeah.
Wait, and, uh, until the next newsletter comes out, and put that in there. You know, that's the only way that you can, that's cheaper than probably mailing, um, I don't, I don't know, but uh, that's my, one of my big things about having that newsletter, is putting those ordinances in there, so people who don't even know that these are ordinances, you know, and that they can be fined for them, you know, you start getting them in the pocketbook.
Well, it sounds like council's interested, and do we, how do we wanna, do we wanna do this? Do we wanna authorize extra posted? Do we wanna mail it to all of the rate payers? We can use the address list for the sewer accounts, do we wanna do that, and just send the ordinance as a reminder? Or do we want to just make sure it's
You know, and here's my thought.
In the, in the newsletter, in, in large print, so it's obvious.
I would, this is just me, I would put it in the newsletter and make sure that the newsletter gets out at the next billing, which is what, September, October?
Yeah, but they gotta read it, and I don't read the newsletter from the P U D. I will read the letter from Jill, and then I'll.
My, my thought in that is too, of just sending it to people that maybe are the violators, I'll use that word, is I'd like to see it go out to everybody.
Right, and we do send off.
Yeah, not just selected, but to do a whole.
Yeah, the, the, the courtesy letter, that, that, that came up when you were on the council.
Yes.
We still, we still use the courtesy letter thing where, um, if we get a complaint, we send out the courtesy letter first and say, you know, without any, you know, just saying, hey, this is an issue, you should take care of it because of X, Y, Z ordinance.
Right.
We may choose to follow up on this in the near future, and
Right.
And then from there, then we can do an official one later on.
Maybe, maybe we do a, a letter that talks about that, but also trash all the ordinances and just title it cleaning up Vader.
Garbage has become a big.
All of the ordinances that.
Garbage has become a big thing on Facebook over the last two weeks, and possibly a little blip of the ordinance on everybody has to talk to Jeff.
Well, I've seen those on Facebook.
I haven't.
And some of these people are so off about what the ordinance is, they don't realize that uh, Jeff does not initiate coming into the office and saying, these people aren't paying me, and that stuff, and the people in the office has told me they're not gonna do anything unless Jess fills out a pen, and he won't do it. So, I've talked to Jeff about that.
Garbage service is an issue right now as a whole, and we're forgetting a, a number of complaints, I mean, it's, it's really escalating almost, definitely weekly, but sometimes several times a week.
Is Jeff that bad? I've never had a problem with that. I mean, his billing is, is his billing, and you just pay the bill, he's not robbing anybody. I mean, go get Lemay, and then you'll really start hearing them complaining.
Thirteen eighty-one a month, that's dirt cheap people for one can.
Yeah.
And if you use the next can, it's three dollars and ninety cents, so do the math if you have three cans. And nobody's cheating anybody.
No.
I mean, I'm, I'm two, three hundred dollars a billing.
Yeah, no, I'm, the number, this is kind of aside, and we're still in the middle of public comment, and Cindy's next, but, um, a lot of people have said, they, they, you know, they're, they're very diligent about their money, and they track their bill, and they try to understand his billing, and their billing, their bills jump around, and it's not, you know, they put out the same number of cans, and it's a different bill every month, you know, a different amount of money, and they, they don't like that.
Arm wrestle Jeff at his little door when he drives by on Wednesday.
Um, anyway, so we've got a number of.
It would be great if you're gonna do this, if you would just do the front page of the garbage ordinance. Say, here's two ordinances that maybe you're not aware of, courtesy letter.
And, and I'd like to add, uh, dogs on a leash. There's a leash law in Vader.
Send us, send a, the newsletter just got to page two.
Oh, come on, that's three items, those are important.
Thank you for.
Alright, yeah, we'll, we'll get something out here. Cindy, or, uh, Stephanie, did you hear that? We need to rewrite the newsletter.
She has handouts.
I have handouts.
It is a newsletter.
Okay, I guess I will. Ms. Radcliffe.
Friends with her anymore, so she gets nothing, Mike.
Alright, more visuals.
Uh, ten twenty seventh street, Cindy Radcliffe, um, the city of Vader has, uh, ordinances and resolutions that govern how we do things. One of them is our building and development, uh, ordinance and our fee schedule. Um, I had a chance in the last month or so to take a look at about a year and a half worth of permits, and sadly, um, we're all over the place in enforcement, we're all over the place in how, how we charge people, we're all over the place in how we find people. And it's not fair and equitable, and I went into the, I'm not one of these people, but I went into it not knowing most of the people that are on here. And I thought, well, why does this person get this, and this person gets this charge for the same issue? So if you look, let's start with looking at the building codes and the fee schedule. It's clear that when you don't get a building permit, or when you don't get the right building permits, the building guy, what's his name? Comment, or somebody, will go by and he'll give you a stop work order, right? And the, the fee schedule's really clear, it says that you get a stop work order, and then that person has to come in and get a permit. And then that person, and according to our ordinance, shall pay a special investigation fee. But that doesn't happen, rarely happens, and the few people that have had to pay it, one guy had to pay three times the amount of what it should have been. One guy had to pay the right amount, then there was these other people that didn't, and when I asked why, it was like, well, that person was nice, that person was friendly, that person I know, you know, I'm like, so if I come in here and nobody's, oh.
Was that, I know it's your time, but was that being a quote? Or was that?
That was a quote from Stephanie.
So that person is nice, that person.
Specifically, I, I took in, I took in the thing, tell her, this is my time, and tell her to stop talking.
Alright, let's let, uh, Ms. Radcliffe have her, have her time.
Took the two permits I was looking at, and I walked into the office and I said, why didn't this person get charged the fee, and I found several of these. And her exact quote was, well, he was really nice. I'm like, that's our criteria now? I'm like, that's our criteria now? And then I asked about another one later and she said, well, I know him. Is that really our criteria? Because I gotta tell you, I have to charge all kinds of money because I'm not next to anybody. So, uh, anyway, so that, that was an issue and our ordinance says shall pay, doesn't say may, doesn't say might, not if they're nice, not if they don't pee on the floor. It says they shall pay that fee and a fee schedule has it listed. Second, the, any quality of how these things are done is not right. This person comes in, gets a, a permit for siding. The guy goes out, the building guy goes out, looks at the site, sees these other things are being done, makes a note in the file that these other things are being done, no stop work order, doesn't demand that that person go gets the rest of the permits, nothing. A month earlier, he went to across the street from that person and stop work order, all these fines, get all these permits, do all these things. And I'm like, well, what's the difference between these two permits? Anybody want to guess? One is new to town, one's related to a city council member. That's not right. I don't care who you know, I don't care who you sleep with. You don't do that. You treat people the same. We're all the same here. And if this person is doing all this work and not getting a permit, I don't care who they are. And if this person has done something wrong, charge them the appropriate fees. This isn't rocket science. This is simply fair. And if she doesn't have the guts to stand up to somebody and say, by the way, I didn't make this fee schedule, I'm not the one that does it, but I have to charge this. She does not have the authority to try, to choose who she's going to, uh, charge and who she's not going to charge. And then finally, the flat fee. Everybody knows what a flat fee is. The state of Washington has determined what a flat fee is. It's actually, according to the state of Washington, a flat fee is a maximum allowable fee for a service. Vader has ten of those little darlings and if you don't like them, get them out there. But I have noticed, again, with these permits, we're not going by it. Some people get on a flat fee for a roof and siding, which is eighty bucks a piece, they get plan review fees. No, there's no plan review fee for roofing or siding, one, for a mobile home. I know it's not enough, you ought to raise it, but you don't get to, uh, it's a flat fee. You don't get to charge all these other, um, uh, all these other charges. And I don't want to hear, and again, this is a quote, Mike, I talked to the attorney, attorney said I could. No, no, attorney doesn't get to change it either. You five people there are the only five that are allowed to change that fee schedule, add to it, delete it, do whatever you want to it, but it has to be adhered to and tell you people, change it. And if you're not getting enough on a permit, raise it or take it off the flat fee schedule. Cause I know the city of Vader knows what a flat fee is. Sheriff's Department contract is a flat fee schedule. You only pay them a certain amount. They can't come back to you in July and say, you know what's costing us way too much money? I need another twenty thousand dollars. I don't care, we're not paying them any more money. A flat fee is a flat fee. If you don't like it, take it off. But otherwise, you have to adhere to it until the city council does their job and changes it. And somebody here, I'm, I'm hoping Joe, cause there's absolutely no oversight. When I talked to Diane about this, Diane had no idea, she doesn't do anything with the building permits, she doesn't know what's going on, she can't answer any questions. I tried to talk to Joe, he's been busy. He's been on vacation, I will give him a minute, but I know he's gonna call me at some point to go through these other thirty or forty permits.
I'd love to have the time, like I was saying before the meeting, before I knew about this.
Right, right.
To sit down and then, like I was talking about, you know, inform you about why this happened or that happened, that way.
Well, I looked at the files, there's no reason to.
You're not making assumption, incorrect assumptions about the, the reasons why things were done the way they were done.
Joe, when it's three hundred and fifty dollars for a flat fee, there is no reason to charge additional fees. I don't care if the attorney said it was okay or not, it's a flat fee. And what's really egregious is that you've done it before. Other people have paid the three hundred and fifty dollars, a couple of people have not. So why is that? Why is it this person pays the extra, this person does not? So somebody needs to have oversight, somebody needs to be looking at this besides just one person and they need to be audited. And those people that were overcharged need to have their money taken back. You'll never get it out of the people that didn't pay enough and didn't pay the correct, uh, penalty fees. You'll never get it out of them. But the ones that were overcharged absolutely should get their money back. Go ahead, Stephanie, explain.
So like I said earlier, if you have those permits ahead of time, we can explain why they were done the way they were done.
You know, Joe, I walked in the office and I was actually quite nice and I asked her about a couple of them. She can't explain it and she doesn't know why and she doesn't know the ordinance.
I think that is a mistake. Stephanie knows what she's doing and if it was done a certain way, she should, she can explain why. And so when we have our meeting, we'll be able to explain those to you.
If she knew the ordinance and Diane would have had to come out of her office and say, you know, why don't you show her the ordinance that you're talking about? And I said, it's the development plan ordinance. And she said, well, I'll have to pick, uh, bring that up and I'll have to look at it. It's the only one that does the building department. So no, Joe, I did, I did ask her and I was nice about it and I brought the file, her files. I looked at them, I said, here's the note from the building guy, why did this guy pay this fee? Why did this guy get a stop work order because he was doing more work? I did ask, she couldn't explain it.
Well, when we have our meeting, we'll be able to explain it.
So were you sending us or Latonice when you came in?
Not Latonice.
Not Latonice.
Okay, so there is some variance there.
Laton is a bunny. You know, so cannot be the bunny. But it wasn't the pit bull either.
Laton's a saint, you know that.
And I can say that on some of those notice, uh, stop work orders and things like that, I've served them myself because it was on a Saturday and I saw the gentleman out, for instance, doing work and if he kept going, by Monday, he would have done too much. And so we did him the favor of telling him to stop working, um, on a weekend. Um, we've done things like that, um, for folks that, um, are unknowingly doing work and they come in immediately Monday morning and take care of it. Um, I do waive the, uh, double permit fee if they come in, um, and do that.
You know, there's nothing in the ordinance that gives you the authority to do that.
Um, I think there, there is and so I don't even think, I'm not saying I think there is, I'm saying there is. So that's incorrect.
So you just pick and choose, so this person didn't come in immediately and then has to pay it and the other person is nice and it doesn't have to pay, that's not fair. It's not fair.
No, it isn't, Joe. I've got some examples right here of what's going on. We have a fee schedule and that's what's supposed to be charged. And then we have the favoritism that goes on here. Um, here's a manufactured home placement, correct amount of money, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's right, that's what it should have been. Here's the same thing over here, mobile home, three hundred and fifty dollars for a building permit fee, two twenty-seven for a plan review. And then we have a hundred dollars for three inspections, a hundred and twenty dollars. So what is that about? And then we have a re-roof and siding installation, so that one's way off the charts. Uh, there should be eighty dollars a piece for a re-roof, eighty dollars for a siding, building permit fee, a hundred and eighty-five fifty. Plan review, a hundred and twenty-five-eight. This, there's nothing consistent about how you sell this and we have a fee schedule, that's what should be charged on, on everything consistently. And then we have this place, what is it? Seven twenty-three D Street, has the whole side of the house cut out, putting in big double doors. I don't see a permit for it or any structural thing for that.
This would be, um, the one across from the school.
That would be that one.
There is a permit, there's a structural permit. It's in City Hall.
I asked for it. Stephanie sent me everything she had.
It's a ten thousand, it's a ten thousand dollar project and there's a permit for it, over three hundred dollars.
I want to see it.
And I emailed it.
I have everything and Joe's sitting here calling me a liar, so.
You're not a liar, you just don't have.
I told Sarah, make sure to get one, cause they watch everything I do.
I've seen it myself.
She's got it.
And we watch everything everybody else does too and gets cheated about mine.
Joe, it's only for debt.
There is no level playing field in this community.
Joe, the problem is it's only for debt. It's not for cutting the side of the house, it's not for taking out the, uh, uh, chimney. There's no structural.
There's no structural permit fee here.
Taking out the chimney, the chimney fell two years ago.
Well, it was still taken out and it should have been.
No, it fell two years ago, literally.
It fell out, but it's.
Fell on the ground.
The structure should have been reviewed as part of that permit.
If you have issues with, um, any permits, please, please give them to me so that I can figure out exactly and understand them myself, because I don't review every permit, that's not my job to remove, 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 review every permit. Um, and then I can fully understand them and I can give you a report on every permit, um, that, uh, you have issues with. Donna, that's, that's with you as well. That way I can be a third party and try to explain it to you.
There should be any, any explanations for this. We have a fee schedule, we know what everything costs, we know that everybody's supposed to come in and get their permits for it and they should have been gotten to begin with, Mike. Make it fair for everybody because you people go after people you don't like with a vengeance and we have proof of that sitting in the room tonight. And then there's this stuff that's totally unfair to everybody in this community. It's pick and choose.
You think we have all of this time to sit here and picket people, all of you? And we don't, we don't have that kind of time.
Well, maybe it isn't you, but we certainly have the office.
A permit comes in and they do the best they can, they follow what we have and they issue the permit. The name on the permit is, is meaningless.
Oh, no, it is not. Honestly, I've looked through all of those permits and I've made notes on every single one of them and I, she's not following, one of them, uh, for a roof was ninety-seven fifty. It's supposed to be eighty dollars.
All right. We're just throwing numbers out. I look forward to having the meeting. Like I said before, like before this meeting, I said, everything's back normal, people are back on vacation next week, we can have a sit down and figure it out. Donna, if you'd like to bring those two or give them to us or give them to Cindy or be there, will we, will we go through them? Okay. We can, we can go through all those two and get the complete answers.
I don't, I think you're attacking you, Joe.
So everyone will be informed.
It's not you, I think they're just saying that, well, it's not, a lot of times when we have people in the office, I'm not saying the ones that are in there now or whatever, sometimes they just don't know what they're doing and they just don't admit they don't know what they're doing or maybe they only know half of what they're doing, but they may not, I mean, it's a learning process, but some people don't want to admit that, you know, they've made a mistake because, you know, someone might attack them.
Well, I, I thank you for that perspective.
So, I mean, but the point is that everybody, she is right, every, if there's a schedule, everybody needs to be treated the exact same way, doesn't matter if they live on the, you know, north side of town or the south side or, you know, if they're friends or related or not related, whatever, it's all should be fair and equal. And if, I don't thi, I don't think there's anyone saying that it's you or Mike or Donna or anyone, I think it's just saying, go buy it, just go buy what we have.
Well, it's something that's in the air though either. There are certain people that do these and they need to be responsible for what they're doing.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
And if they need training, they need training. And if they need the thing that tells them they really need to follow the law rather than what they feel for somebody.
Exactly.
Because this needs to be fair for everybody. I don't care whether you like them or you don't. We have a system here and that's what needs to be adhered to.
And I can say that there is no, there's no favoritism, there's no, then like I said, there's, the name on the form is meaningless. If there's mistakes made, they are legitimate mistakes, it is a mistake and not favoritism.
But you can't say that because you weren't there. I mean, it was her and it was Stephanie. So you can't, you can't say that that's not been done because you're not, you've not been in there the whole time.
You're right, I'm not in there the whole time. I do have confidence in our employees though.
They have to keep it open mind that it could be true or it could not be true.
Well, they're still employees and they need to follow the rules and regulations just like everybody else does.
For sure.
And making excuses for them without even questioning or looking at all of this stuff like you should be doing.
Well, that's why I've said that we're gonna sit down like we did, we've done in previous ones, sit down and make sure everything is correct.
Fine, then, uh, there needs to be rules adhered to by the employees that work here. I, I mean, uh, you know, if I didn't follow what I'm supposed to be doing at work, I mean, they're gonna fire me and justifiably so. And that's the same thing that applies here, even more so here. These people have the right to be treated fairly, everybody.
It's this.
Um, if you would like.
All I really would like to say is that every job is not the same, it's not square footage and different cost per square foot is part of, uh, the valuations. These numbers get sent to Townsend also when they find the permit to make sure the valuations are good. I have asked, I was, my permits, two years were, were reviewed by Cindy in one afternoon. No, I cannot go back and tell you why I charged, um, things like that. I've asked her right now, what are the specific questions, what ones do you want me to look up? I will look back, there could be emails because of inspections added, I don't know because I haven't had an opportunity to do that, but I'm not the only one that uses the numbers, they go for approval and get signed off on.
It doesn't explain the flat fees. It doesn't explain.
Thank you for that, Stephanie. And we'll be able to, like I said, we'll be able to go through and, and answer it and so that we can either find mistakes or not find mistakes and so that you can understand why it was charged the way it was. Because there are variables in every project.
There's not variables on flat fees and there's not variables in humans. Everybody gets to.
There is, when we have portions and things that are added on driveways, there, there's a flat fee.
Not on a roof, not on a flat fee, Stephanie.
For the pudding and the skirting and the vinyl, that's what our.
It's still a flat fee.
There's a new civil thing.
All right. Thank you, thank you everybody on this, the public comment is closed, we're gonna spend more time on this, uh, on a, in a one-on-one type setting. Uh, elected official comment, Donna, would you like to talk more about this?
I would, I want to see this straightened out. And I'm, I'm really tired of watching all the family and friend routine go on around here. And it does go on around here and you can sit over there, Joe, and say that we're all mistaken and what she's doing, there's a good reason, there is no good reason for charging people more than they need to be charged. And we also have an inspector that has blinds on, on certain people. So, you know, they get away with a lot of stuff depending on who you are. That is a fact. There's a lot of people in this community that know it as a fact. I've witnessed it myself more than once. So that's about all I have to say, but this needs to be straightened out and this one-sidedness and people on their own making their own personal decisions about something. We have laws, we have rules, we have regulations and they need to be followed, not with employees' personal feelings getting involved in it. I'm done.
Uh, we have two other council members still here, Mr. Hall and Mr. Parsons. Do you have any reports or a comment?
Yeah, well, I, I think, uh, yeah, the process is handled the best it can be, that there is a witch hunt among a few people trying to prove otherwise. I think once you go through the details, if there is a mistake, you know, it's not a witch, it's not because it's any favoritism. It's ridiculous what they're trying to do, they continue to do this, they have no proof, a bunch of accusations with no real facts, just, uh.
What are they doing?
Yeah.
Please.
Unbelievable witch hunt going on with the city employees continues to happen by[1685.66] Unbelievable witch hunt going on with the city employees. It continues to happen by a handful of people. And most people don't agree with you. I'd like to inform you now. So you can continue, and Joe will provide the details. And you'll find, again, there's nobody trying to pick on anybody. What a ridiculous, picking on city employees like that. It's just no wonder they quit. They're tired of being banned off by a handful of people who accuse them of doing stuff they're not doing. Unbelievable. It's shameful and unbelievable.
Mr. Parsons?
I... Best just keep my mouth shut.
Thank you.
I'm not done yet.
You said you were done.
We don't get to go back, Donna.
You said I'm done.
It's one order.
There's more. There is more. I talked to this gentleman that lives on the west side on the B Street alley today. And the two motorhomes that are sitting over there, that all this big rigamarole was caused over there. They're leaking, they're holding tanks onto the ground.
The B Street, right, right across from the driveway there? Okay, B Street alley.
There. So I stopped and talked to him today, and I actually got to inspect his hoses. And I got to inspect his dump site, and I got to inspect his RVs. And there is absolutely no leakage coming from those RVs on anything. What they saw was the holding tank hose laying out there on the ground. It is not leaking because those holding tanks are closed. They have a portable holding tank that they dump the RVs into, and then they take them over and dump them into the side sewer. There is nothing wrong with what they're doing. They're not leaking anything. I checked where the hoses have been laying. There's no liquid laying there, nothing. They're clean. Nothing wrong with them at all. And that's another thing. I forgot all this stuff. The ordinance, the letter that Diane sent out about you can't live in an RV more than fourteen days and all this kind of stuff, that she sent to that gentleman over here? But somehow or another, that never, that letter doesn't seem to get to anybody else that's living in RVs in this town. Why is that?
Well, he has an active building permit. He can live in an RV.
Yeah. Well, they are. They're rebuilding that house, and there's no reason they can't live in an RV while that's being done. Not a problem. I'm talking about the ones that are gonna live here and die when they're eighty, living in an RV.
That isn't the only one that's been, that's been sent out. And that one was, that one was sent out because, anyway, we don't need to talk individual ones. We did follow up on that, on that, that potential issue that you're talking about as well. And I believe it was resolved, like you were saying, with building permit and everything. But yeah, that's not the only, there are other code enforcement actions that have been taken as well. If you'd like, I can get you, I can get you a list of them.
Why did he get a letter though if he had a building permit and he was allowed to live in an RV?
I believe it was because Randy complained and said they were leaking their sewage all over the ground over there.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there was more than just a building permit.
No, I knew it said it was filling anything on the ground. I, I said, "There was a hose coming out of the RV. It should be checked into." That was all.
Yeah, Mr. Hall didn't have, didn't know that there was a building permit, but even, even so, it did look very suspect.
Well, I've checked into it. Both RVs have hoses coming out of them, and you normally do that, so there's nothing wrong with that. I've lived in an RV for twenty years, so I have a little bit of experience about how that works. And they're not doing anything wrong. There is absolutely no leakage around there of anything. If there was, you could smell it.
Yeah, you're right. They're following, they're following all our guidelines for what they have going on.
So it's, it's fine, and, yeah, that's good. But I was concerned about the way that, considering how I, we've talked before about the people living in the RVs and how we're supposed to make this new ordinance where, or they, or we have to let them live in them now because of that. So I don't know what kind, I don't know what we could do about it. But yet, at the same time, then Diane sends this letter to this gentleman that says he can't live in it more than fourteen days. So what are we doing? What, what are we doing about this? Or, or are we going to do anything about it?
We haven't finished the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. In fact, I haven't brought it back before council, done any work on it at all in about a month and a half. If you remember, we were waiting for the legislative session in Olympia to wrap up because there were a lot of things that were coming through that might change whatever we were, we were going to do related to that. You can actually see that in this transitional housing, was part of the, their overall housing type regulations.
Well, that's what I was wondering about.
This, obviously, this is unrelated to that, but it's, they were looking at housing in general. And so I have not pursued it any further yet, but it is on the list of things to do. I need to get the attorney to help, help with that again, and I was trying to save a little bit of money for a month or so.
Okay, so, so we are either gonna let people live in RVs if they're homeless? Yes?
Well, we are going to make an ordinance that fits the city, right? It's either, it's either we're going to allow it through a permit process or not allow it at all somehow and start telling RVs out here.
I don't think you can stop it now because of the deal in Seattle and how that's all started. Now, people have a right to, if that's their home, that's their home. So I'm concerned.
We do have rules about having one home on one piece of property, right? Unless, without a permit, if you're gonna have an accessory dwelling unit, which is what the ordinance was, there's a, there's a process for it.
Right. But what if they are homeless and they don't have any place else to go but park it on the street? Then what do we do?
I don't know what we do.
We already have that, Donna. She lives on A Street.
We have a homeless person on A Street?
Yeah.
She lives in her car.
Oh. Who?
We don't know who she is. She lives in her car.
This is the car that's parked in front of the post office occasionally.
Is she hurting anybody?
No. But see, we don't have any signs that say you can't park there, according to the sheriff's department.
So, so I'm kinda...
So she sleeps there.
Okay, so I'm kind of both ways on that. If they're hurting somebody and they're causing damage, and they're peeing on the sidewalk and that kind of stuff, I have an issue. But here's a poor person, doesn't have any place to live. They're not hurting anybody, are they? I mean, she's not dumping trash or anything like that, so...
No.
Leave her alone.
She just stays, plays her opera and uses everything.
Yeah, there you go. It's something to wake up to. If you like opera.
I think she goes down to clean early.
Alright, well, I'll start poking that accessory dwelling unit bear again.
And all else fails, we have a nice piece of property down at the end of E Street that could be cleaned up.
Park, the park?
Yeah. What? It's not doing anything down there but going to trash. It has for years.
And you want to turn it into a homeless camp?
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
Sure. We gotta, we gotta make a place for the homeless. Where do you want to put them, Mike?
Uh, Seattle.
Not in a park?
You guys don't even know that's a park. That's like no man's land down there. Nobody pays attention to it. You mentioned homeless camp, and then the ears perk up. So here we go. What do you want to do?
Park Board was talking about clearing that property and at least leveling it out and at least plant some nice grass and have a pitching table or something like that. So just, just have a, just have a clean area, maybe with a fence so you can look at the creek, make it safe. But not doing anything, not just, so in the end, so that what maintenance would be involved, just mow it. They were talking about that. Once we get the new tractor and a rush hog and things like that cleared out.
We don't have a tractor yet.
There is, it is a big issue as well. I mean, part of, there's trailers, the motorhomes. All of them in town, people are living in them.
Yep. Okay, I'll make sure to get the accessory dwelling unit ordinance to council sooner than later.
Yeah, we need to proceed on the ordinance for that.
Yeah, now the legislative session is over, we should be able to get some, some guidance on that. Further elected official comment?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Do you think, give me a chance to say I had enough?
We have a motion on the floor to close the meeting.
Donna's got something else.
I'm done.
We don't need a motion.
Donna, I'm counting on you here. Come on, one more time.
If hearing, withdraw your motion just to make it legal?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Hearing no other elected official comment, this meeting is adjourned at seven forty PM. Thank you, everybody, and I'll make sure to follow up on everything that's been talked about tonight.